All of them. Anyway, I attended the Cities and Towns Conference in Tucson, which is always a blast. And we resurrected the booth and it was very busy and thanks to Terry and Maria and Jenna and my husband John, who were the face of the booth. It was really awesome. We gave every single tchotchke away, every single one. Anyway, it was, but it was a blast. So we were back to that. And I see we have some of our Litchfield Elementary people back here. So for those of you, all of us who have enjoyed the carnival for over forty plus years, and it's not been for the last three years, it's coming back. So that's huge. And it's a huge community event and it brings people into town too. So I'm really happy that they're resurrected it and I'll be there, not dressed in costume, but yeah, yeah. Anyway, that's all.
James. We have on the phone, I think, Councilman Brandon Watson. Councilman, do you have a report?
I don't have an awful lot to report. I would like to comment on the recent storms we had. How the first, first big one in August, I think it was August, yeah, late August. I got up early in the morning and without driving the neighborhood just to see what kind of damage we were looking at. And all the crews were out already early in the morning cleaning things up. So kudos to, to the workers who were out so early doing such a great job, keeping us cleaned up and safe and the community is looking great. Just more kudos to Public Works for helping me and my dad out in a pinch on his bicycle one day and don't need to go into it too much, but they, the guys were super involved over and helped us out. So thank you. I am in Georgia right now, so don't have too much more to add personally right now, but looking forward to getting back home and to fall.
Thank you. Councilor Claire, are you on the Zoom call? Looks like maybe not. Alright, so we'll go on to the Vice Mayor. Do you have a report about your trip?
Well, I'm back from an extended trip. I just want to thank you all for your patience and putting up with me, attending these meetings remotely. It was difficult with our old system, so hopefully the new system is going to be fantastic and Lisa will have a great experience tonight with our meeting. But again, thank you for your patience and putting up with me. I appreciate it and the staff too. Thank you.
Good to have you back. I just have a couple of things to mention. First is, we want to give thank you to Councilman Donahue. She did a great job on the booth for the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. It was a, it was a good turnout from the, from the city and the booth was excellent. So thank you for all of your hard work and please thank your husband. And also want to mention that we had a celebration for the Air Force, its birthday. I'm going to have, I think it was on Monday, right? And it, it was, we had about a hundred people turn out for this, this flag raising ceremony and a lot of people from the base. And it was a, it was quite a, it was quite a nice recognition for the Air Force. So if you get a chance to come to one of these, we help, we have recognition ceremonies for all the different services. You're welcome to come and it's, it's a special time. So that concludes my report. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yep. Yep.
So several things I should report, Mayor, about the report tonight. One, staff continues to work on the plans for the Camelback Park Wall and Parking Lot. We will have a public meeting scheduled for that on November the thirteenth at six o'clock. Discuss the wall options, see what the citizens want. You may remember, we did a survey on this several years ago to talk about a few fence, so on and so forth. We are going to do that survey again. Obviously, those results are a few years old. But again, this is a public input meeting on November the thirteenth regarding the Camelback Park Wall and Parking Lot. We were pleased to announce we have offered a UHR Director. She will be starting with us on October the ninth. Look forward to having her on staff and meeting you guys soon. A State of the City 2024 has been scheduled. It will be a different format from the past. It will be on Thursday, February the fifteenth, that evening. Of course, in the past, it's been on Saturdays. This will be a little different format. You'll be, see a shorter presentation than normal. The mayor will be doing the presentation followed by the video that's being prepared. And we look forward to that. Again, Thursday, February fifteenth. You may have seen an article that was in Arizona Republic Day regarding Charter Cities. It's a good educational piece about what we're trying to do. Please check that out. For our citizens that are listening, you've, of course, experienced some of the issues with Liberty Water over the past few months. And you may have seen that the city has filed a formal complaint for that and the ACC has filed a docket against Liberty. Liberty has since addressed that and we'll be meeting with them soon to see what we can do about that. Council may have noticed that your pressure suddenly got much better one day. And the reason why is the ACC filed a former docket on Thursday and the interconnect that backed up Liberty to Goodyear was turned on on Friday and suddenly the pressure got much better. So, but again, that didn't happen until the formal docket was filed. Along those same lines, we did have a monsoon come through on August thirty first that did about twenty thousand dollars worth of damage in the city. Some of you have seen trees down, branches down. WCA and Public Works did a great job getting that cleaned up. You may also have seen the speed bumps on Bird Lane have been removed. Just so everyone knows, we only removed two. We're not removing all of them. And the reason why we removed those two is because when Bird Lane was built, storm water didn't exist. Our storm water drains didn't exist. And because of that, there's houses along Bird Lane that are actually lower than the street. So the water was backing up between the speed bumps, almost like a bowl, if you can imagine. And when it got so high, it would run over into the neighboring yards. So we took those speed bumps out and we are going to be putting some different ones back. Again, there are new ones going back. But they will be the bolt-in type that will allow drains through, so we won't see that issue. Long-term, Bird Lane needs storm water, just like we put on Old Litchfield Road. But that, of course, will take years to get that designed. It will be probably easily a five to seven million dollar project when we get there. Probably more by the end, just to be honest. I'm sure you've noticed as well, the new speed limits are being enforced on Litchfield Road and on Camelback Road for thirty-five miles an hour. I don't know about you, but it seems to me there's much less traffic on Litchfield Road now. So again, that is being enforced, thirty-five on Litchfield and Camelback. And the last thing I would say on this is we have a public input meeting regarding PFOs and PFAs on Monday, October the sixteenth. That is at St. Peter's at six o'clock. That is not a council meeting, but again, it's a public meeting. We invite you to attend that. Again, Monday, October the sixteenth at six o'clock. As always, I welcome any questions if there are any.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we can't talk about this, but could you, in your report, just enlighten us on what the status is of maybe the flashing lights, warning lights, speed limits, lights, LED, solar powered, maybe for the roundabout and maybe entering the city and?
Yes, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor, those have been ordered in or on the way, sir. For those of you that may not know what the Vice Mayor is speaking of, we are going to be putting flashing yield signs, the ones around the roundabout are going to be lighted yield signs. Also, the four-way stop signs at Old Litchfield and Wigwam there near the school will be lighted stop signs. And we've been lighting stops, our lighting speed signs, like the ones you see on Bullard, will be going up as well soon. They have been ordered on the way, sir. Thank you, sir.
Questions? Councilman Donahue.
Matthew, is it just the two speed bumps on Bird Lane, not the rest of them? We're just fixing those two?
Those two. Because the road grade changed in other places, that's the only area it was affecting.
That's the only spot there was problem? Okay, thanks.
With the degradation of the citrus trees around the city, I'm just curious, or maybe you can put that in the report on the internet. I've noticed that the dead part of the trees you didn't cut off.
A lot of those trees are not going to make it, unfortunately, sir. We're going to lose a lot of our old orange trees. You may have seen too, we're losing some of the rose bushes around the flagpole, some of those bushes around City Hall. And it's, it's just because of low water pressure. Basically, our water pressure has been so low, the sprinkler heads couldn't pop and the trees and the plants have paid some of the price for that, unfortunately. I would also say for our parks, as I was saying, the pressure was so low, the sprinkler heads wouldn't pop, if you're familiar with how those work. So we flooded our parks to counteract that and keep the grass from dying. And because of that, our water usage was up four hundred percent during that time.
Interesting. What is this? I know what it could be. What's the effect of policy?
We are, Councilman Donahue, we are planning overseeding now. Ever since the interconnect was turned on, pressure's better. So as long as it stays turned on, the grass will be okay. But that's the gamble. It was turned on on a, they could be turned back off any day. Yes, sir.
Didn't we used to have in the city, like, I thought we had like a water truck from the past that went around and?
Still, yeah, it stills water and green.
Do we use it?
But staff can only do so much, only so much water we can do.
It just would take too much to save all of them?
Not enough, not enough workers, not enough trucks, not enough time for all the water. It needs to be done because water pressure was so low. So we were doing what we could, but it's a lot of manual water and we can only carry so much water.
And it's a combo of the water pressure as well as the extreme heat, correct?
My opinion, ma'am, I would say it's more water pressure.
Yeah. People are asking. I'm like, well, I don't know.
And it ages some of these plants. They're getting, they're getting to the end of their life, like orange trees and? Okay, is that, no other questions? And that concludes that section of the agenda. Next item is response to last meeting's call of the community. There are no, there were no requests to speak last meeting, so there's no response. Which brings us to this meeting's call to the community. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on a non-agenda item. You have three minutes. The first request is from Michael Sweet. Alright. Michael got his questions answered, I guess. Very efficient. Alright, next request to speak is from Peter Molling.
Council. Welcome. Thank you, Senator. If you know, twenty-two years ago, I found the speech to put right upon that. And over that time now, basically, there's a time. And there was even, it just. There are many others, but that's the. I would say maybe another guy, but. Okay, I think you know, Morgan B., about September. Any problems with community with, uh? But it grows, it's growing fast and grass, that's not town. I'd say, he's, he's bound up on it, that's not, but. He's, he's obviously. But they have, um, not only look of the island, but look on trees alike. They're facing longways, not a camel to go home by. There's just no, there's, it looks like we're broken down. And then you, two to three years ago, I drive down, um, Bushville Road, and I just, right. And I see the forest. But we look at, no one said he wants, that they have a church, please. It's going to make that look pretty. But the downtown, what we are now, it's like, but it looks like. And isn't earth gone? And I'm not just me, I have people say this. And like, what's going on? I just shake my head. And, you know, just even at Christmas time, we did a last year, where I did something, so much. I just don't understand why we were not doing more. I mean, we generated over two hundred thousand dollars here on average to the city tax. And I just wish we could do more to show that we just appreciate what we have done compared to what's coming. Because it's going to be a competition. We all know that. I want to compete on a level of people. And I think we need to look at, not just downtown Litchfield, but other parts. The second thing is, my understanding was, we'll be leaving the new village center, they're going to need more return rates to sell. I think both of the cities, those people. I need, travel fee, I need to come on Sunday morning, but first it's out. But it's, it's a part. People in front of Carroll Park, going, and cars packed up sometimes, eight, ten go apart, because people are closing their Carroll Park. And this is any indication of what it's going to be like when we do open the village center? It's going to ruin my business. Someone's going to want to stay out and fight crap. They'll be calling today or say, where can I park? And I, we're already, I'm by the truck, I could, I could. I had a rookie walk, tell her, I'm, I didn't think it'd be turned there by other walls. They turn right on Wigwam Litchfield, and go into the park, that. I have to say, it's going to be problematic. And I think I said, we want to protect dangers to the shore. It's going to have a much greater impact on, do I match you with that as well? And, uh, I'll let it go down, and you know, I like to respond. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. As you indicated, we can't respond today because of the open meeting law and the fact that this is not agendized, but we will have a response in our next regular council meeting. Okay, that takes us to the presentations section of our agenda. We have some proclamations. The first one is about Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Proclamation is available in our agenda packet. The council has it. I'm going to kind of go through and read the entire thing. But I do urge everyone to be aware of the problem that domestic violence presents in our society and here's that for the families in our community. The second proclamation is for the National School Week. Since we have the chef with us, we're going to do that one for the benefit of the chef or all of the work that he does for our kids and making sure that they have good school lunches. The proclamation of the City of Litchfield Park. Whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation admirably for more than seventy-seven years through advanced practices and nutrition education. Whereas the National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and academic achievement of our nation's children. Whereas recent research shows students are receiving their healthiest meals at school. And there is evidence of continued need for nutrition, education, and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs. Now, therefore, I, Thomas L. Schoep, Mayor of the City of Litchfield Park, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the week of October ninth through the thirteenth as National School Lunch Week. I encourage all residents to become aware of and concerned about their children's and their own nutritional habits in hope of achieving a more healthy citizenry for today and the future. With that, I want to thank the chef for all the work that he does in our Litchfield School Lunch Program. So, Chef, there's more to talk. Just thank you, uh, the city for your support on this one. We appreciate it. Thank you. The third proclamation is the recognition of the Arizona Cities and Towns Week. That's also a proclamation, it's also in your packets and is available when there, those of you that would like to see it are here. This reminds people of the importance of the Arizona Cities and Towns for the lifestyle and protection of the communities that we live in throughout Arizona. It's important to, uh, it's important to our residents that Arizona Cities and Towns continue to provide, excuse me, the quality of life that we provide in our communities today. So I encourage you to remember the importance of your cities and towns during the week of October fifteenth and twenty-first. Now, with that, we'll go on to reports. The first report is from your fire department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tim Wayne, Goodyear Fire Deputy Chief, reporting for August. Some of our responses. I'll start with fire provisions. Review, one construction permit, and then completed nine occupancy inspections. Emergency for the month totaled sixty-nine, slight decrease from the previous month, a decrease of about fourteen percent. We saw sixty-nine total incidents of the sixty-nine, sixty-three, those were medical in nature. One hazard conditions incident, call for service, a good incident call, and then two false alarm calls. That concludes my report. You have any questions for me?
Thank you for your service to our community. We appreciate it. And once again, the citizens always feel comfortable when they see your trial.
Thank you, sir. We're proud to serve this community.
Thank you. Next report is from the Avondale Police Department. I understand that we have a brand-new lieutenant with us.
Sir.
Lieutenant Manny Rios. We welcome you in, in one of your first duties as lieutenant in our community.
Yes.
Thank you and congratulations.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council, my name is Manny Rios. I am the new lieutenant for the City of Litchfield Park. I'm glad to be back. I was actually the first sergeant for Litchfield Park, so I'm glad to be back in the supervisor capacity for the team. And I'm just glad to be back serving the community since we've last met two years ago. My kids now come to Litchfield Elementary, so I'm here every day. And I'm proud of the work that our police department's doing and the continued collaboration that the City of Litchfield Park and the City of Avondale have. For the month of August, the police department tracked a total of two hundred eighty-six calls for service. I know that last week, on the fifteenth, we started a new traffic enforcement on Litchfield Road with the new. Today. Ultimately, conducted a total of sixty-four traffic stops and only going to continue as, as the days go on. This past week, we had a conference in Laughlin and we met with the flock representative. Avondale's trying to get flock cameras in our jurisdiction and we talked Litchfield Park out of all the milestones that were reached here in Litchfield Park with flock. Also, in the month of August, our Litchfield Park Patrol Officer, uh, Hamilton, was presented with a life-saving award in front of our city council. And that was in response to the drowning call that took place in May in which the life of a small child was saved. That's all I have for council tonight. If you can answer.
Are all sixty-four part of the thirty-five mile an hour?
Yes, ma'am, they are. They're on count back.
Holy, holy, hasn't even been a week, has it?
Hasn't been a week yet.
I was, I was out of town. It might have been a week, but.
Are those mostly warnings or are they actually tickets?
Uh, right now, we are starting with educational stops, Mr. Mayor, but if some of those traffic stops do necessitate drivers getting tickets, they are getting tickets as well.
And how about, what, you know what the breakdown is between, uh, commercial vehicles and non-commercial vehicles?
I do not know at this time, sir, but once we have our next monthly stats, we will have those broken down for you.
And my final question, with our residents along Camelback, their, their largest type of, biggest type of concern that they have, where the noise is the worst, is really late at night, early in the morning for your pork market. I'm wondering, do our, if our patrol is aware of that and is keeping an eye on it during those, those early morning hours?
Yeah, it's, they're not a lot of.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
Alright, thank you for your service to our community. That brings us to our staff reports. We have a finance report today.
Barts, I think I've mentioned in my weekly updates that I would present to you June, once we completed closing fiscal year twenty-three. Because those transactions actually continue to post through the end of August. So that's why we have two tonight. So our sales tax for the fiscal year twenty-three. Over June of last year ended up being forty-three percent higher and then year-over-year, we had a thirteen percent increase. Overall, construction sales tax was down thirty-six percent, but we still collected over what we had budgeted. Then for our total revenues, we ended up collecting just under sixteen point three million, so we were twenty-four percent over budget. And then our total expenses for the year are just under ten point five million. At the last meeting, Mayor, you had asked me to take out that million-dollar debt service payment that we had put in for parking garages. So I zeroed that out, so that made our total budget just over eleven million. So that put us at ninety-five percent of our total budget. Our net general fund operations, our revenues exceeded operating expenses by five point eight million. Our one-time revenues, I've gone over these many times, except this new one here, we did receive the three point five million dollars from the county for improvements to Camelback Road. Our total capital expenditures last year were right at six point, just under six point seven million. The majority of that was the downtown storm drain project, which we did receive sixty-five percent reimbursement from the county. So that leaves an ending fund balance of twenty-five point seven million. I just want to point out and make sure everybody's aware that that does include the three point five million from the county that's reserved for Camelback Road for future improvements. Other factors that could impact the fund balance could be the Sun Health Restoration and to complete Litchfield Square at about ten million and whatever other city CIP projects we have. Are there any questions on the June report? I do want to point out, the final report will be presented by the auditors later this year when, after they complete the audit. Yeah, the Department of Revenue conducts audits continually. And so we won't even know that it's occurring. And so what happened is this particular taxpayer remitted to us two hundred thousand that should have gone to a different city. With, with our zip code being as big as it is, it's really confusing for businesses because they have a Litchfield Park address. And we catch, we catch these all the time, but unfortunately, this was one that we, we just did not catch. So it did reduce our sales tax payment by that amount. And unfortunately, they charge us interest and frustrating because it's, but. Yes.
Excuse me.
Had another good sales tax month with sales tax sixteen percent over August of last year. And July and August together were at fifteen percent over last year. Construction sales tax this month was up fourteen percent over last year. Overall, we're down thirty-six percent. Our total revenues, we're right, about right on target. We're at seventeen percent of the year and we've collected seventeen percent of our total revenues. And you can see the interest income is already at forty-seven percent. We've already collected two hundred and thirty-three thousand. We've started transferring weekly to the LGIP investment account, so that's made a significant difference in our interest earnings. Our expenses by department, we do have some that are over seventeen percent, but we do have a lot of one-time larger payments at the beginning of the year. So I expect these will smooth out as the year goes on. So overall, we're at sixteen percent of our total general fund operations budget. And our revenues have exceeded expenses by six hundred and twenty thousand. This brings our ending fund balance, which right now is an estimate until the audit is complete, but at twenty-five point seven million. The detail for rec and special events is in your packet. I won't go through that unless there's any questions. The HIRF Fund has collected just over eighty-two thousand. We haven't started any projects just yet or that have posted in finance anyway, so that leaves an ending fund balance of nine hundred and eighteen We haven't started any projects just yet or that have posted in finance anyway, so that leaves an ending fund balance of nine hundred and eighteen thousand. For Litchfield Square, we did receive the eleven point five million dollar bond proceeds. So far, invoices that have posted are two hundred and eleven thousand. Our Court Enhancement Fund has roughly seventy-five thousand in it. And this brings us to our total fund balance. Citywide is thirty-eight point eight million. But twelve point two of that is restricted for special revenue and particularly Litchfield Square, the eleven point three million. And brings our ending fund balance to twenty-six point five. But again, just those same, same reminders that what will impact that balance is the three point five million from the county and then our other large capital projects. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are.
Questions? Okay, next item is a report on the P G A Luke.
Sorry about that. This council to. To update the team, the P J North and P J South. Health. Goodie Airport. The second part of my update for the Luke remediation. Do you mention, we have.
Thank you. Now you have a report on Capitol Street this week. Counsel, it's the L I P A's, uh, solid, 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 uh, Trump said, uh, take the, uh, back, be quiet, uh, there, uh, have a reading.
Councilman Romack, that is correct. Basically, we think the building could be sold off the foundation. Of course, he said there'd be a force work through with a new slab utilities, et cetera. We'd make the bathrooms N D A, modern heat and A C, and et cetera. But yes, sir, it would be much cheaper than building a new building we looked at before. Be an interesting project, but yes, they're much cheaper. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. The Camelback Park, do we have all of the legal stuff done that we were trying to get signed, easements, right-of-way acquisitions, whatever? Is that all finished now?
Trust me, yes, sir. We did get those a while back. There was an acquisition there as far as the wall goes, if that's what you're speaking of. And yes, sir, we did finish that a while back.
Removing, maybe there was a ditch that wasn't in an easement or some piping that wasn't in the easement or something, and.
So actually, we didn't own the land that the wall is sitting on today, if you can believe that. But we do have it now. So part of the new design will be moving the wall out so we can take up that, that space that's left on the corner.
Correct.
And even with building a new parking lot, if you can believe it, we'll have more grass than we do today because we're moving the wall out. So I'm more than making up for it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks for your report. Next item is this report from our special projects managers, the problem. Broke.
So I've talked before about Honeysuckle Street, complete reconstruction between Old Litchfield Road on the east, near the Wigwam. Traversing west towards Desert Avenue, the street was reopened. Before Labor Day weekend. There was some cleanup work and some other details, street trees, tree grates, other landscaping that'll be completed. Now that the street has been reopened to the public. The sidewalks in front of the businesses on the south side of Honeysuckle were basically their whole. Our general contractor, a partner, was working very closely with the businesses on honey, that section of Honeysuckle. I believe last, they were, the same day they were. And kind of dilapidated sidewalks. I did not. Contractor, like I said, has been doing a really good job of trying to coordinate that with our business community. That I think most of council is. Is this week. But Aiken Gardener this morning. Around one thirty. Stockpile of dirt. In the future with future development in, in the square. Councilman Romack, you had asked the timeframe for the infrastructure. We have been working with Aiken Gardner on that. They are working in earnest to complete all of the infrastructure improvements by December of twenty twenty-four. So a little bit more than a year from now, but that is their schedule to try to complete the improvements. We are working on internally and with Aiken Gardner on guaranteed maximum price or G M P six that we'll bring forward to council, hopefully later this year. That would finish up most of the infrastructure for the square. Later on the agenda tonight, there's an easement as the construction is working from east to west towards Litchfield Road, so I'll. I'll present that a little bit later on the agenda, but we'll, soon we'll be seeing other improvements on Desert Avenue, just east of City Hall. La Loma Avenue, west of City Hall, and then the remaining section of Honeysuckle. From Desert Avenue West, west of the T-Shop, getting closer to Litchfield Road, the concrete has been poured. And Aiken Gardner mentioned this morning that they hope to be paving that section of Honeysuckle sometime next week, so we are making progress. We are trying to get the street, new streetlights put in. Frankly, the subcontractor. Who's doing the work for us, right engineering, there's a backlog to actually get streetlight poles. We hope to have new streetlights installed in the square, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, so. That's pretty much the update on Litchfield Square, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. What is the timeframe for opening up some portion of it so the public can drive through there? Is that going to be December two thousand twenty-four? Are we going to have something opened up?
So if you look at Village Parkway, for instance, between Litchfield Road East, the road's pretty much done. And the reason it has not been open to the public is there, there is a little bit of residual work that Aiken Gardner needs to complete. I would want to work with the city manager and the city engineer or public works director to jointly make a decision on when we could open that, that road up to the public.
It'll be some time before the end of next year, though.
Yes.
Okay.
For sure.
Thank you.
Excellent. Through the, through the mayor's. Mission. Driving around just to see how the, I'm not an engineer, I'm just a planner, so.
Okay, thank you. We have another request to speak from, I'm not sure exactly what agenda item it's on, because it just says number eight. The sidewalk, sidewalks. Under what?
Under.
We're general, we're generally in, in agenda item number eight under report. So the question is about special projects?
Yeah.
Okay. And you're welcome to ask your question about special projects, depending upon the specificity of it, whether it fits within the open meeting or not, I can't tell you, but we've got our city attorney here who can give his direction. You're welcome to ask a question.
I'd like to ask Mr. Broke or somebody a question about the sidewalks. They have done a great job with redoing those. Is there any plan to continue down in front of the restaurants where the old? Um, is there any plan to continue down in front of the restaurants where the old, um, sidewalks that you guys now have, city now has responsibility for during the trade, I believe, with the current landlord? Um, there are some broken pieces that I'm afraid somebody could trip and fall on. And I also want to see if the council will look at somehow to lower the curb now that we have. Because in the past, the high curbs were necessary to prevent the water from running over. And onto, towards businesses. But now, since we don't need them that high, I've seen a number of people over the years trip and fall. I know two people who broke, women who broke their hips because that curb is so high. And there's no handicap except in front of Park Cafe, all the way down to Papa Paul's. So if we can look at trying to find a way to either lower those, which is very difficult to do, or maybe not have them, uh, actual curb. But maybe somehow to do a slant so that people can walk up. Again, I don't know the answers, but it is a very dangerous area, but it was necessary back when the city was built because of the lack of a flood control plan, so.
Thank you. I think I assume that this is outside the scope of our, of our agenda is I have, it's not even about the square. But we will take the questions and submit them to our, into our. It's not about Litchfield Square, it's about Litchfield. Around the corner on, that we rebuilt, so that it doesn't fall. But we will get you an answer to your question.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next item is the magistrate court's report that's in your packet. Got any questions about that? See the city manager or. We'll get, we'll get the questions to Judge Ring. Next item is the consent agenda, is there any, is there any item on the consent agenda that everyone in the council would like to remove? Those are items nine A through F.
A.
A, okay, anything else? Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda items nine B through F that's presented? Through second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, thank you, counsel, Brandon Watson. All right, those consent, consent agenda items are approved. Consent item number K is in minutes, that should be a question about.
Yes, uh, eight, six, three, uh, back. This is the section that deals with the stock. On maybe awful condemnation that we discussed at the last meeting. And I think that's probably a very important items to be correct in our minutes before we set this in progress. Where, where are we? That, that minutes. No, we applied for a long period of. Like they, I don't recognize a motion, it's not a good, or they failed by, you know, they make a lack of motion. There was, there was no.
Yeah, yeah.
There wasn't.
Yeah.
But I think, I think, let us see, it was a motion, it was a lack of motion. There was no setup.
So there was no motion at all?
Okay, and then, so this, so this very, very clear that this was unanimous. So. And then also. Think. Maybe that stuff that folded bottom of that section, maybe that goes down. The language issue here is just, you, you can't, it's not a motion, failure, failure, or who did what. Or the unanimous. I think it's pretty.
Yeah, these, these minutes are important enough that I think the best would be for you to take them back. Listen to the tapes again and reword particularly this section. All right? Okay, so item nine A is going to go back to the city. Now we go to item ten, this is ten A, public hearing, uh, use permit for lighting of the business park. From public hearing to order, is there a staff?
Good evening, Mayor, members. We're in our industrial park, uh, corner of Camelback in El Mirage. Uh, it's one of our few industrial zoned, uh, properties in Litchfield Park. Did a zoning code amendment, uh, where, uh, your. Application wireless facility. And, um, external mission in our city code or, uh, zoning code. We did. But he's in industrial districts, so we presented, uh, that item to planning zoning commission and then council, uh, this past spring. So we, we do now allow, uh, wireless facilities and. Applicant here tonight, uh, representing T Mobile has been very patient as we've gone through the first of the zoning code amendment, which has been approved and codified. And, uh, made part of our code. And, uh, subsequently, we've processed a use permit application for a new T Mobile facility. And I asked the applicant if he would provide some. First, um, exhibit is a site plan or aerial photo of. So this is the disguise. The action tonight would be to have a public hearing on the. The south side of the existing self-storage facility, which is Camelback Road. On the west side of El Mirage Road, there was no neighbor. Um, photos. Counsel. Tonight, if you'd like a full presentation from T Mobile. Tonight.
So basically adding a tree?
Well, it's not a tree, but it looks like a tree.
Looks like a tree, that's also, that's good.
Any other questions? No? So the applicant is here, uh, you're welcome to make a presentation. I don't know if there's going to be any questions, but I think we understand what you want to do. Is there a desire of a council to have an application presentation? Okay, let's see if we had, do we have any public comments? Looks like no public comments on it, so. Okay, well, we've had a public comment now. All right, with that said, I'm going to close the public hearing. And we go to, uh, item B, which is a discussion of possible action to approve a use permit for the sixty-five foot tall mono home in Monument Point. Is there a motion to approve the use permit? Through second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our use permit is approved. Good job, applicant. Next item is introduction ordinance twenty-three dash two seventy-two on group living facilities. The front.
This is another zoning code amendment, um, that we've been working on, um, with Matthew. Um, you might recall that this past spring, uh, council adopted ordinance number twenty-three seventy, uh, related to. Uh, group living facilities. Uh, the action tonight would be to, um, uh, that ordinance twenty-three seven. Passed by council on May seventeenth, uh, structured sober living homes. The action tonight, uh, for twenty-three dash two seventy-two would be the first read. Related to penalties and procedures related to, um, group living facilities. So, uh, the ordinance, I can kind of walk council through. What we're proposing under enforcement and penalty. In section thirty-one point seventeen, um, items one and two. Um, are the specific areas that we'd be asking council to modify, uh, ordinance related to that. So, uh, the action tonight would just be the first reading and, and, uh, no vote, uh, per se on the introduction of the ordinance.
Question, how was council ordinance? Through second. I need you to speak up second about Councilman Romac. All right. Any further discussion on introduction of this ordinance? All those in favor of introducing the ordinance, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Item is introduced. Next item is the approval of the letter of intent, but we're not going to talk about this one. We have not heard back from.
I recommend we bump beside him till October, sir.
Coming back to council in October after, after input from Cat, Cat Clark. Is there a motion to table this? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, item, item D has been tabled. Uh, item E, introduction of ordinance twenty-three dash two seventy-six, which is a purchase of right of way. Just to make the record clear, it is, the note, the agenda item says it's a purchase of condemnation, it's not a condemnation. Uh, we have gone through and negotiated a purchase of the right of way that we do not own around the dental office and the library. So it is, it is not a condemnation. Mr. Williams, do you have a presentation?
Mayor and council, this is the right of way in front of the dentist officer, actually, just behind us. So actually, the property is between the dentist office and Wigwam. So it's the property there, but it's also the property between the library and Wigwam. So the platte history is somewhat interesting here. Those buildings were built in the late sixties, the library office was built in the, was built around that time, so were the dentist offices. And at that time, this was, this was one parcel, the library, the rec, tennis courts were one parcel, the parking lot was one parcel. And the dentist office was one parcel, there were three separate parcels there. But when the property was purchased by Dr. Ellsworth, meaning Dr. Ellsworth in two thousand and four, the parking lot and the dentist office were turned into one parcel from two. However, at some point in the past, the right of way along Wigwam was supposed to be. Carried over, signed over to the city, over to Goodyear, however you want to say it, but it never was. You can see it on the original platte map, anyway. That being said, the city needs to purchase the right of way there along Wigwam. It's ten thousand five hundred and thirty square feet, that does include the sidewalk, that does include the parallel parking spaces. Because today, those are actually owned by Dr. Ellsworth and by Dr. Warren. Also, many of you have been to our festivals that we have there throughout this fall. And the grass area there in front of the library, we actually don't own that, that's owned by the dentist. So this will be part of that as well, would be to acquire that. And a part of the reason we need to do this one, obviously, is for the liability of it. But also, part of the Litchfield Square project is the walking path that comes right through here outside of this building. Is going to make a hard left when it comes to the sidewalk up here, jog down about a hundred feet and then cross all Wigwam. It can't cross where it is today. So we will, of course, have to widen out the sidewalk to make it eight or nine feet wide, so on and so forth. But of course, we need to own the land that is owned. So that's part of that process. Again, we had it appraised back in the summer for a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, six twenty-five. That does include the improvements of the parking spaces and of the sidewalk. Again, this is the first reading, we have met with the dentist officer and talked to them about this, they are agreeable to this. Um, that being said, we will be changing the square footage by a little bit. Keith is recommending that we add some couple of small spaces to it for turns, that sort of thing. So it may grow by about four hundred, four hundred square feet, something like that. So it would be just under eleven thousand square feet. But we are working on that. And again, this is the first reading for introduction only. I welcome any questions if there are any. Yes, sir. The financial impact serves, it's a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, six, one thirty-one, six twenty-five for us to purchase it. That will change by a little bit as we add a little more square footage to it. Okay, as, as far as C F E.
Councilor James, one thing. So you're talking about this sidewalk out here. Dr. Ellsworth owns, is this similar to, the Wigwam owns the sidewalk on the other side?
We didn't buy that one.
Didn't buy that.
I mean, we only did a T C E there. The reason we didn't buy that one, that was a lot more space and thus a lot more money, just to be honest. So, um, one thing I think council should know about this one, the staff will recommend later that we convert these parallel spaces out here to angled parking. So of course, that would be some future improvement cost to do just that. But we would recommend we do that in the future.
Have a conflict of interest and will not partake, partake in this? All right, any other questions or comments?
Because you brought it up, I just want to address it. The, the condemnation language isn't all the, the standard form, uh, acquisitions of, of property. Just like it says condemnation or dedication, it's not going to be given to us for free. So, uh, same language that we used when we had to acquire the small, uh, right of way over by the, the roundabout from, from J V N. So it's just, that's what the, the language is for those types of, of ordinances for acquisition of property. Even, even though we. E, e- even though we could come to an agreement on, on price and everything, it could still be classified as a friendly condemnation, which. Has benefits for the, for the ownership and stuff, so that's why we have it in there.
I will, we'll leave it in there at this point, but I want to make sure that.
Not condemning this property, we are negotiating with the owners and have an agreement with the owners for it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the introduction, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed saying, please signify by saying nay. No nays, all right. We have an abstention because of our conflict. Uh, that, so the, the ordinance is introduced. At this point, I'm not sure that we need anything of the executive sessions, because we're not really, unless we're going to talk generally with our council a lot about Cat Clark. Okay. All right. So item B and C. So is there a motion to go into executive session under items eleven, E and C? All those in favor of going into exec, executive session, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we're going into executive session under items eleven, B and C. When we come out of the executive session, we have no further business items to handle. When we come out of the executive session, we have no further business items to handle.